And I will call the meeting to order at six thirty-six and I will ask Dawn to read us in the pledge. Please. Oh, that's nice.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for joining us, RITM, and welcome back. Rachel is coming. She was running a little bit behind from a few kid responsibilities and will be here. I told her we'd get started and see her when she arrives. Any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Seeing no public and hearing no comments, I will move on to the board acknowledgements.
Um, we had a great Founder's Open House.
Yay!
That was my first time attending.
Oh, cool.
So, it was nice. Some Mark in the cafeteria.
Yes.
Dishing out pasta.
Yeah, we all had pa- or my family had pasta dinner, but um, yeah, that was great. So, it was a good
That's a fun event.
Welcome to the season.
It was amazing.
Yeah, it is.
Is that um, food option or it's not, it's just this building that does the spaghetti supper food?
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, I don't remember anything from elementary schools.
I wonder if that helps with the turnout, because I always remember that transition to get here being a nice treat to be able to like not deal with dinner.
I think there are two hundred and twenty meals. That's pretty big.
That's awesome.
Wow, it's really grown.
I think that's terrific.
Yeah, we ate and the kids, kids loved the opportunity to like have their parents eat at school, I think was maybe a big thing. And, and my younger one was really excited about the opportunity to eat at his brother's cafeteria. You know, he thought that was like, oh, well, I wanna have dinner at Liam's cafeteria. He thought that was just the best thing. So, yeah, that was.
Halfway through the second tub, these are, these are literally tubs of pasta. They gave me a smaller ladle. A messy barter, giving them too much food.
Oh, I will say, my, my only complaint from my children was that, "We said, they said there was dessert. They said there was gonna be dessert." There wasn't any dessert.
Just shining it through.
Shining it through.
No, it was great.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. Anyone else with any acknowledgements? No, Rachel will take the ticket.
Well, I, I don't know, but I wanted to uh, I know the um, has anybody mentioned the Edge team? Their pumpkin checker?
No, we just, we just got started. That was our first acknowledgement. Pumpkin checker?
Pumpkin checker, um, that they had been using or working on. So, two of the boys on the Edge team have been working on this and trying to, learning about the physics, the mechanics to make this work. And their goal from last year was to get it ready in time for the competition at the Autumn Fest this weekend. And they did it. So, they went out, I can't remember how many feet, that was like a hundred and something feet. And it's just like very exciting to have, I've seen pieces of it along the way through. And it was just very exciting because as of like last spring, they were frustrated because they couldn't get to work the way they want. But just that perseverance and they got it working.
That's cool.
So, I just thought that was cool.
Very cool.
Beautiful day. I didn't get over there in the morning.
I didn't either, but.
Perseverance is a common theme in that building, I think. Probably all our buildings would ever call that being a big
Huge piece.
Big piece of everybody's goals in the middle school.
Cool. I, I'll say one other thing. I always talk about how great our music is, but I'm actually getting into the sports scene now with Brian playing soccer. One of my hats off to the various coaches who put in their time on the challenging tournament on Saturday that I thought they took good care of our, it was our middle school boys be soccer team. But I know they're not the only team out there that are doing, so just hats off to the, the various coaches.
Thanks for that, Dan. I, they just do an amazing job. We're gonna, this year we're going to get feedback from parents and student athletes on their experience in sports, just to make sure coaches are getting that type of feedback. Because it's not always the experience that other student athletes have, so I'm glad they're feeling that way as well.
Yeah, it was neat.
All right. Well, one for all of us on our professional development front. The V S B A conference is coming up and Lauren has sent out a message to say if anybody can make it truly for any portion of it. I've, there've been times in the past where I could not get there, but I'd get there for like half of one of the days. Or the agenda should be up at the V S B A website. And I will be going for both days and they can register us and cover our hotel and do all of that. But it is hard. I completely appreciate to carve out two full days. So, if in looking at your schedules, there's any portion of it that you're able to attend, that's terrific. And for those of us who are, you're welcome to.
I did see that almost all of the second day is about Act forty-six and public engagement and, you know, best practices for what presumably other areas have done. I don't know if that's other areas nationally, because there's not been that much of it locally, but.
No, I think it's, it's, I think what has been experienced locally for the most part or throughout the state. Because, you know, there's Benton and East here, but there are also, um, the V S B A in, with the support of, um, Visbit, Mount School Board's Insurance Trust, is establishing a consulting self-sustaining branch that will sort of share best practice among studies committees. So, instead of asking A O E for the same questions over and over again and having committees ask the same question building over again, you have a cadre of consultants who are sharing their own best practice and working throughout the state with study groups, because they saw this to be a need as people. One of the things that happened with Act forty-six is it left open the community's opportunity to do it like they would want to. And so, one of the biggest responses from communities had been, "Tell us what to do." Like, "What are we supposed to do?" And Act forty-six intentionally left it so that, um, communities could look at all the options available for achieving outcomes for kids pre-K through twelve. And in doing so, there's less definition on what, um, the outcome of the study might look like for each of these communities. And so, it really lent itself to having some experienced, um, people available to support the work. So, I think maybe that's part of, I had seen the preliminary agenda. I hadn't looked to see the more current one.
Yeah, I just looked at it today. So, I'm hoping that maybe that is a piece that I'll try and get there for. So, I just have to figure out logistics, but it seemed like that whole Friday is really focused on all of that, which obviously is timely for us.
Absolutely. And whatever, however many of us, should it not be all of us be able to attend, we can make sure that the subsequent agenda leaves some space for sharing out what we've taken away from it, any of us who can go. So, we'll make sure we, um, do our best to share that development, even if it's not for everyone's ability to attend. But think about it in pieces if it can work for you as well. And, um, Lauren, uh, we can just let her know and she'll go ahead and do the booking for us.
Okay.
And the regional meeting is the seventh?
The regional meeting is the seventh and that is, I think it's, is it Sam?
B F A, is it?
So, no, Ben, that's what I was gonna say. Let me just, um, and at five, they make a light meal available. And then I think the content begins, is it six, five forty-five? There have been times I've been able to make the sandwich part of the program, which is kinda nice to be able to sit and chat with other board members from the area. But if not, I apologize. Before we're done, I'll confirm exactly what time the program begins. I wanna say it's maybe six. And I know that includes a presentation and Rebecca Holcomb will be there again, which is terrific, and Nicole. And they will be looking, um, pretty closely at Act forty-six as well. And then there'll be opportunities for communities to share and break out in smaller groups after. So, um, somewhat similar format to last time where there's an overview and then a breakout. And I am actually, um, running for the regional rep this time around. I've been in different capacities on the V S B A board and with the restructuring of that board, they're in need of a regional rep and I'll do that and then may continue on as an officer as well, but that is determined later. So, that happens at that meeting. So, again, at that one, hopefully that can work for folks in the evening. I know evenings are hard too. But, um, it is always valuable to hear from the secretary. She's really, um, inspiring as well as insightful and I think provides a good direction. And we take, I always take away a lot from her presentations, so hopefully it works for folks. And that is also register, um, either directly on the V S B A website. I'm pretty sure that one is easiest to register. They like to have a heads up. I think it's free, but they like to have a heads up on who's attending for food.
It doesn't say where to stand up there. Say on town over there.
That's right. It really does matter. Feed Dan and he, feed them and he will come. Okay, um, I will, if we're good with acknowledgements, I will move us on to the consent agenda and ask for, um, a motion on the consent agenda of the minutes?
I make the motion, we accept the consent agenda to include the minutes of September fourteenth.
Any second?
Second that.
All those in favor? I will pose passes five zero. Thank you. All right. Well, Mark has a full slate for us tonight. He's got communication and support to the board with several subcategories to include the actual monitoring report for that particular category. So, um, I'm going to turn it right over because we are a little longer on our acknowledgements and shockingly, I'm behind. I apologize.
Hi, everybody. Nice to see you. Sorry I'm not doing well, Rachel.
I've been yesterday.
It's the season of germ. Kim and I spoke last week and felt it was important to take some time to just give you some updates, notably on the things that we've been talking about recently, starting with transportation. And I'll provide as much information as I have. We'll continue the conversation as long as we'd like. But I'll begin by mentioning that as I've known all along, that improvements will be made over time. And, uh, less of the concern tonight is the consistency of which buses are arriving and what number and what driver. I think that we have that finally figured out, really now that the remaining parents who within several neighborhoods are concerned about the length of time that children are left in the gymnasium supervised after school and the length of the bus ride home. And I'll talk about how we, how it was being addressed, but also recognizing that it's, at some point, it is gonna be what it is. I've met several times with administrative team over the last month. Includes people from out of state, from the corporate offices in Rhode Island, um, to address, um, some systemic issues that I think that Mountain Transit was challenged by. Some of it not anything that they created, just something that we asked them to do. And I don't think that they were prepared to take on, we basically redesigned an entire route system. And with novice folks at the helm in terms of how to use software, the software and also Mount, new company, new drivers. As you, as you've heard, it's been somewhat of a storm over the last four weeks. So, I've been impressed with the consultation that they have accessed through their S T A, Student Transportation of America. They've got some really bright people working with our local people on how to make sense out of the data. And with the improvements we've seen, I attribute a lot of that is to the people who've come up to our neighborhood to help us with that. We have a status report. I, I didn't make a copy yet, so we can send you the email from a woman named Stacy Emerson, who joined Edge and Brian Hemingway at our last meeting in the cafeteria, who's been sort of the brains around the routes. And she has great acumen with the software, has really been able to puzzle through some of, some of the problems that we've had with the system. Part of it, although I think some, some of it was, some of the missteps we took were human in nature. I also think it was, we didn't have good data. And what we discovered was, I'm gonna try to make this really simple. We have a system called M M S, which is our student management system. All, all parent data are in there and student data. And that gets populated with data that comes in when parents register their kids and all the stuff that we ask parents. And then there's this program called TransFinder, which is the software that designs the routes. In order for this to work, M M S has to have current data that uploads into TransFinder every day. So, when there's migration of families or kids' after-school program changes, the supposition is that that should automatically update TransFinder and it doesn't. So, this is an example. Kim Charvino, who's the registrar at E S, has what's called the Green Bible. It's a literally a book this big of green sheets. Where Charlie goes on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And guess what? It's never, it's always, there's always a difference.
Play every day.
Well, what we, what we discovered too late was that there's no field in M M S or TransFinder that allows to show the variance in a student's after-school schedule. So, when the schedule, when the routes started, guess why? What happened? We had a lot more kids on the bus in certain neighborhoods because we didn't have real ridership data. Because it wasn't, TransFinder didn't have the data we gave them, because you can't, all those five hundred green sheets, it has to be done manually in the TransFinder, because it doesn't upload automatically. So, that was a revelation. It caused the storm that we had. You know, I, you know, we need more buses because we have eighty kids on the bus and that's not an issue anymore. But that was the problem. We didn't have good data and it wasn't managed well.
Can, so TransFinder has the field. M M S doesn't, but TransFinder does.
Neither of them do.
Neither of them have it.
They have primary residents.
Even uploading, I mean, even manually entering them, we can't, in our, any routing system other than a human make the variance.
That's right. So, we have a spreadsheet now.
Okay, got it.
Mountain Transit event gave us the human resources to take those five hundred sheets, the elementary, literally there are five hundred. Well, four hundred and thirty. Not as many here and fewer at the middle school. And they are importing those data into TransFinder, so we have an actual count of the kids' heads. Now that we're week four into school, there's, there's real consistency in who goes to kids first, who goes to grandma's house. You know, now that it's, um, and we don't, I don't, we're not worried about kids who've got the sniffles and have to go to home for the day or go to someone's house. It's really the current stuff. The other thing that they learn quickly is their drivers, you know, needed, need to be, how many kids are on the bus? Where do they let, you know, just a good, you know, just manual clicking, how many kids on the, on the bus? So, they didn't, the point is they didn't have good data. And all of that's been corrected and we've got a much better headcount. And the reason why it's taken so long is it's taken time to really look at the actual data. So, when I look at the all-clear, which is the, um, means the last time the kid is off the bus in the morning and the afternoon, buses with the exception of two buses are getting to school before school, seven to eight minutes before school, which is not much different from last year for the late buses. We still have a couple of outliers that, um, there's bus eleven, which you probably have heard of. Yesterday, it was a day Monday, Friday came in at eight twenty-six. Today it came in at eight thirty-five. So, there's always those swings, but my belief still believe that the sixteenth bus, really the fifteenth bus is gonna help several of those routes that are still sort of on the edge.
Do we know why that one is still running late?
I, I don't know the specifics, casual. You know, we, we added Baker Street, then we took Baker Street off last week because they were able to do some switches. So, there's some minor things that are going on in that regard. And I think another bus, Stacy's convinced that given another couple of weeks, the route's gonna be running really well. Because even now, um, the all-clear signals are really, they're pretty good with the exception of a couple of buses. It, what you experienced, the horrific experience you saw tonight with traffic based on an accident, that's the reality. Twenty minutes of the afternoon run is getting from, on average, is getting from one building to the other. So, right now, the afternoon run is an average of thirty to forty-five minutes. So, unlike what you might hear, because I still get emails, my kid was on the bus for an hour fifteen minutes. It simply isn't true. We have the data. We know that it's running from thirty to forty-five minutes. That's within the contractual agreement with Mountain Transit saying everyone's home within an hour. Is it still too long? Yeah, it is still too long. And it's compounded by the back and forth, trying to get off of the little crossover lane here, trying to get off the sandhill. It's an issue, especially when people are driving fast and, and, uh, it's, buses have to be careful.
Now they're gonna start paving Route two A, so.
And the, and the gas lines going in and, I mean, all those things contribute.
And I was thinking, we need like a, like a flashing crosswalk sign at that intersection just for buses. Like, you know, somehow you have like a remote control in the bus and it's like, stop for buses. Just let the bus go through, you know?
It's not the only factor, but it does contribute to delays.
Definitely, yeah. I've been behind them before, like on random pickup days, you know, going from one to the other. It's not easy.
The sixteenth bus, um, actually would be, it would be, you know, because we didn't have a bus thirteen, you know, it was always confused by numbers. Not additional bus.
I didn't even know that. Yeah.
The additional bus, which would make it the fifteenth bus, but it would be route number sixteen. There's one through twelve, fourteen, fifteen, and then there'd be a sixteen. It's a superstition.
It is not. I have bus thirteen.
That explains it.
I drove bus thirteen in Colchester.
I don't know. It's just one of those funny old things. I don't question it, but it does mess us up.
Some companies are like that though. They don't have.
So, um, uh, we will have another bus come online, as I said in my email, on Friday night. They have a driver. Again, this is just luck of the draw. She walked in. She just needs to have her background checked, criminal reference checked. She has a C D L. If that falls through, they have another person lined up who could start by mid-October, no later. They still feel we don't, may not need the bus. I'm saying, we need a bus, because it's gonna take the pressure off, I think, four, eight, ten and eleven. And I, and I do believe that that's, that's gonna just be the icing on the cake. And we have that commitment to make that happen. So, I, I do, uh, think things have improved. We still have a ways to go. I've spoken to more high school parents than I've ever spoken to. I, I think, uh, you know, for those folks who thinks have worked pretty well, up to this, you know, why is it so difficult now? I think what's hard is sometimes there's no logic to the, to the routes. It doesn't make sense to me either when a kid lives two miles from the high school. They drive up here, transfer and they go back to the high school. I have no good response to that, other than they're trying to do the best based on all the riders. And even though it would make sense just to drop your kids off in this neighborhood, it would delay things at the other end. And I, I understand that and that's very frustrating for high school parents especially. We did assume responsibility for all high school communications as of last Friday. Did our best to help support good real-time communication from the high school. I, I, I think that they were well-intended, but perhaps not equipped to deal with the, I think, how rapid we need to be and what parents had expected, um, in this last month. And again, I understand that, because we've all been challenged by trying to get out information real time and responding to questions about. So, I wanna, again, hats off to the, the people who have, have worked hard. My, I think the million-dollar question for me, wow, that makes sense, the million-dollar question. Is can we sustain this internally? Do we have the capacity within the organization to be able to continue to make improvements and sustain those improvements and make the adjustments when we need to make them? And we've gone over, gone through a complete route overhaul. We're gonna get through this. But as it goes bump in the future, you know, does Mountain Transit have what it takes to be able to make those adjustments without, you know, taking, you know, getting on the, getting on a third rail? I'd like to think that I'm, I've done a good job of probably the most highly-paid bus coordinator in the state of Rhode Island. I've taken my job seriously and I know that the team in Essex Town has as well. But we're quite willing and ready to give over the reins and have these decisions be made by the people who are smarter than we are. We've just had to step in and do the work.
So, will they continue to update TransFinder as things change for you? They have someone that will do that?
Yep, that's.
Because that's half that.
That's Dawn. That's, that's part of the battle. So, and you can't just not, you can't just change things without telling other people.
That's right.
And I think that's been the other misstep, that changes have been made internally. Not everyone knows those changes have been made, so when the email comes, I'm saying, really add. So, the communication is something we've addressed as an administrative team as well. We have other outstanding things in the contract that needed to be addressed. Two-way communication with buses, vis a vis walkie-talkies. We now have all of our hardware in place, so we can, the video equipment's very cool stuff, because it takes a front and a back and it's audio. You can actually hear kids in the back and zoom in to see what they're looking at on their iPads. Your brother is watching now. So, that's all installed, um, all of our car seats for kids with physical restraint needs because their disabilities are all in place. G P S systems are not in place yet, but they're, you know, so that we know where buses are all the time. That was part of our contract. They're not all installed and they, I guess they kind of wanted to get those installed now. So, it's a good report. We're not completely there, but I, um, I do believe that we certainly are way further along than we were two Mondays ago. And I, our parents, I think some parents probably thought maybe attending would be important to share with the board their continued disappointment, but I also think the evidence is clear that things are better than they were. But we're still not out of the weeds.
And, um, from just in follow-up from last time, like the shifting of kids, that's all done already. And are we running extracurricular buses?
Yeah, thanks for that, Cashel. Rachel asked that question a couple of days ago. I think we're all done. Again, I don't know about the shift. Some kids came off of this bus and on that bus. There might be a little bit more of that generally, I think what it is. It is. A new bus sixteen will probably create a little bit more of that shift. When I came to you on the night of the last board meeting, I was meeting with, with people at five-thirty in the evening. They came in, because it was supposed to be earlier in the day, but it was like last minute. And my sharing with the audience that an activity run would help at the middle school, meaning we wouldn't have to bring K six, eight onto our afternoon runs, was based on their preliminary, look, preliminary look at their data. Four days or like, three or four days later, they realized it wasn't going to work. So, um, the thought being that if, if those kids had an activity run, or some of those neighborhoods had activity runs, then the afternoon runs, K five would go quicker, because we wouldn't have to stop as many times. But when it all sugared off, the activity runs are later this year at the middle school. Last year, they were getting there by three-thirty at the latest. Now, they're coming in at about three-forty, three-forty-five. So, that really doesn't, it really doesn't help us at all. But again, now that the school year's going, those extra kids from the middle school, plus I heard from some parents, I want my middle school kid to ride with my younger, their younger brother or sister. That wouldn't have been an option, so I think it's gonna work out without it.
Um, have you, I just, I'm wondering about like the safety, just because I know it's been a concern with the number of buses at the mobile with delivery trucks there at the same time and if there's bad communication.
I communicated that today, Rachel. It's the first I've heard of it. I actually drove up there today and I, I missed the transfer, but.
And I think it's day-to-day here.
Yeah. And so, I was thinking the N B T, you know, that new bank there that has like lots of pavement that no one ever parks on that piece.
And you can, it's a circle.
So, I was going to, I put that shout out to say, can we, you know, I've heard from some constituents saying that it's busy. It is. There's a new business back there that's generating, I think they have like motorcycles and A T Vs. So, I think, thanks for the feedback. It hasn't come up as an issue, but might there be another common place that is less traffic? So, we'll research N B T if that's a possibility.
I'd just like to make sure that that's, you know, because it has been mentioned by view and.
We've wa, have you watched the transfer happen?
Yeah, they're usually door-to-door.
Yeah, so kids aren't roaming, but.
But the buses are trying to get around and it just is the potential. I mean, and parents who are coming, if you're coming off the two-eight-nine, you can see. And it just looks like a mess.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just concern that's been raised now.
So, thanks for that.
All right.
What's that happened, cost-wise, adding the new bus, but not adding the, uh, activity runs? What, where, how much has the budget been adjusted by this process?
It hasn't yet, Dan. And one of my meeting, reasons for meeting last week is to, based on where we are and we're both sharing responsibilities for being where we are, I think we should talk about what the cost, additional costs could be to do. So, that's, without going into executive session, I wouldn't wanna share much. But I think what I'm hearing from the guys who make those decisions, I think it's gonna be workable. And I'll share more information as that comes, it comes into light. The activity runs probably would have run us seventy-five dollars a day. So, it'd be up around fifteen thousand dollars if you had two buses for the year. A new bus with drivers, about forty-five thousand dollars. And again, that, that, it won't, it won't be that. Yeah.
And, um, in general, for like communication plan around if there's a random really late bus or something like, do we have, maybe you did before, but is there a specific plan in place for how to communicate that really quickly?
Muriel, um, the plan that we put in place last year, it's been so unpredictable this year. It's like it's hard to even keep up. But if, if a bus is going to be late, there's an accident, um, the bus garage needs to tell us in central office. We tweet it, we Facebook it and we send out, if it's gonna be more than fifteen minutes, we send out an alert call now just to that group. So, we disag, we take that bus offline and we communicate just to those parents. It's all in the timing. You know, we lose staff at four-thirty. There is no staff in the building, so it's really up to the central office to do all of that communicating. So, the rule of. So the rule of thumb is when, as soon as the driver knows, he or she needs to let your little Ramos know, and she contacts us. And now that we've got, you know, a frequency that's in sync with our walkie-talkies that can call us directly.
Okay.
And is there, I'm wondering, Mark, and I apologize if I missed it in the communications you've sent out before, but I think you guys have done a great job in increasing the social media presence. But I'm wondering if parents know to follow, that that's a real-time update or pretty close to real-time update, whether it's Twitter or Facebook posts, because you've increased your presence pretty dramatically this year. And, um, that is especially effective if people know to follow you.
Well, we could, uh, Peter Pharaoh is delighted with the bus debacle, because he's got a lot of followers. I'm like, any more people like me today or something?
Whatever.
Following me.
Follow.
Yeah, following, maybe not liking.
But thanks for the reminder.
They still get the dislike.
My plan is to come out with, you know, hopefully one final communique that says, we're all buttoned up. And, um, and then remember to follow, follow us on Twitter and Facebook.
How much communication is actively not just being put on social media, but to parents? I, I'm unfortunately always confused when I get something, say, am I getting this because I'm a school board member, or am I getting this because I'm a parent? And so I, I get a little lost of like, what are, what is the public in general? How, how informed are they? I mean, you'd say, okay, we change a route, we call those parents. Great. And that's obviously crucial.
Yeah.
But has much gone out to the, this general public, say?
I've probably put out a half a dozen, half a dozen communications, yeah.
Okay.
From, from the, from the get-go and in late August.
And one of the things that Rachel and I identified was that as high school parents, we weren't getting the communications that Mark thought was going out, because it had been shared with the high school. And it was to have been distributed through the high school, and it was failing to show up either on the homepage in most situations, or with a tremendous lag, or not at all.
Mm-hmm.
And that was, with the schedules being different, became especially bad. So I, I know that, um, that has been remedied, and I'm very appreciative to see that we've taken control of one of the things we can try and, um, at least do, even though there's lots of things that are outside of our control. So I'm really appreciative. I'm sure that was no small undertaking, cause we're different student data systems. So we don't have, that was the delay, I think, Mike, right, that our systems don't talk to one another. We don't have our high school kids' contact information in the same way that the high school has that contact information. We know where they live, so we can route for them, but we, um, don't have the immediate contact that we provide as high school students to the high school and the K eight provides to us here. So that didn't talk with one another. I'm appreciative of that effort. Um, and I'm just wanting to put a heads up out there to a few differences in schedule that I know about for October, and I'm sure you guys know about it too. So to put those on the radar, cause they're coming up quickly, um, for plans and however that might adjust schedules. Because there's two days that we don't have schedules, so then I'm sure the high school, um, run is later. And then there's like a couple of days that they have off, and I'm suspecting that may improve some of our transfers that are harder, um, the day before Columbus Day and Columbus Day.
Our time's might actually be a little earlier.
It might be a little bit earlier, so, or just have our bus drivers wait. Like, if the days that the high school's not going, you know, just don't have buses show up a little bit earlier.
As long as it's a tough day.
Cause a little bit earlier, I recall, is being very challenging for parents and kids running up there.
And you're giving several days notice, because parents aren't always reading their email at nine o'clock at night to find out changes for the next day. So it's just making sure it's timely.
Yeah. I, 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 I accepted the responsibility. I wasn't happy with going, I can tell you that. I mean, I, Kim was very good with me and persuasive. Um, I, I really felt that the high school needed to take responsibility for communicating, even though we're responsible for K twelve, pre-K twelve. I get that. But I was a little bit, uh, I was unim- I wasn't impressed with the lack of resp- with the response. Good people, but just, I don't think they saw the gravity of the situation. Because I don't wanna, transportation is one thing. Where does it, it needs to end at transportation. You know, I mean, I don't wanna take on more responsibility. We were flooded, as you know, with, with, um, with requests for information. And to add another five hundred families on top of that, on top, it was just, it was crazy. Um, so and having to be worried about, how do I make sure the high school's doing, it's just, it was just another piece of work that I had to, it wasn't in my mental model, so I was challenged by that. But now that it's, things are quieter, and I, and we have a good sense of what the new times are gonna be that are adjustments. We know what happens when it doesn't work. We wanna avoid that, so.
It, it takes, saves a lot of time in it after the fact. That little extra before saves a lot of time.
But I just, I, thanks for your support throughout. I, I think you understand the issue. It was, it's been a pretty, very, a very difficult four weeks for all of us, and, uh, but I do think we're, we're in a good play, we're in a good place.
And I'm appreciative, and I think we collectively support the additional bus despite the improvements, Mark. Because as we can think about not just an, an accident impacting schedule, um, which of course has the potential to happen at any time. Just knowing that if we're running so close to the razor's edge, and it's not mud season or snow flying, I think that we, you know, are wise to anticipate that as well. And I, I'm hearing that we are supportive of this additional buses. We have been before. It wasn't just a put-the-fire-out support. It was.
Well, it's, what's gonna come back, and I guess it's, we're going over time, but, um, you know, people don't like to have to go to bus stops. Um, I'm already here. It must be snowing. I don't want my kid to have to walk. And these, these are things that have to happen. You know, we saved the, we saved taxpayers a hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's, that was a lot of, that was a lot of, that was a lot of money. And we did it, because we wanted to make sure we brought in a budget that was, was reasonable. And, uh, that was, that appeared to be the best, and I don't wanna lose sight of that, but we've, we've gotta make some concessions, or I think families do, to, to make this thing work. And, um, you know, the after-school piece, um, I wouldn't want my child sitting for thirty, thirty-five minutes either at the end. Some are sitting for ten. So Peter and Wendy are committed to, um, I met with them again last Friday, um, about what you can do to break up, especially at the elementary school, where you have a larger mass of kids. Founders, it's not as big of a group. Um, but still, um, that's a, that's a lot of, that could be a lot of time to be waiting in your snowsuit for the bus. So, um, Peter's committed with his bus departure team, um, to look at alternatives. And I like his ideas. Um, logistically, he's gotta figure out how to keep kids in the pod areas. Um, but I think rather than having them all congregate, um, in the gymnasium, um, I think there's another way to do that. So I, I, I've heard parents a lot, and clearly we've heard it for the last, since I've been here, is it any different really from the la- at least the last five years? Kids wait that, that length of time? But I think there are other ways we can do it, so it's not as, um, difficult for kids. There's a, people out there are saying we don't allow kids to talk and go to the bathroom, and, you know, those, those things are natural. We do allow kids to go to the bathroom.
Of course.
Some things that are said that, you know, I think just make it more upsetting for parents. But, um, we've listened to that. We're not just ignoring it. We're, I think Peter and Wendy have some ideas on that.
There's the silver lining. The improvement of the whole after we get through the routing.
Yeah. You saw the S-BAC letter. Um, you know, we're very proud of our story. I didn't have, you know, one person, but, you know, I had like two people talking about the bus today. Just the way it is. So, wanna go to class size?
Yes, please.
So, we sent you this. Um, we're in compliance with our guidelines. Um, our guidelines state that in kindergarten, that the optimal size is sixteen. Um, maximum is eighteen. We have seventeen. Um, in grades one through three, uh, the cluster is optimal average is eighteen, uh, and we have nineteen in our class, classes when you look at that cluster. Um, uh, four, five, or four through six, it's, uh, twenty, and we're twenty-one, um, one in one point five for four through six. So we're a little under Mac, we're right between optimal and maximum. And seven, eight, it's twenty-two to twenty-four, and we're at twenty-one. So we're, we're actually between minimum and optimal for grades six, seven, and eight. Um, if you look at the educational quality standards, which don't supersede your policy, but what they put out is they, this is new. They're clustering kids grades four through twelve, and you can have up to twenty-five kids per classroom.
I read twenty-five.
Yeah. So, um, we're way within those limits, if you look at EQS, but, you know, I'm following your, your policy guidelines. And I think that we're, again, we're not on razor's edge, but we're, again, we're sort of on the edge, as we usually are. But I just wanted to update you. I meant to update you last month, but it just.
No, that was timely. We found.
We meant to do last month.
We're talking numbers of buses, not numbers of kids.
Yeah. I found an old class picture, I think from fourth grade. Thirty-two kids in my class.
Yeah, wow.
So, when I saw this, I was like, yeah. I just can't believe we had that many kids in one class.
Okay. Any questions on class size?
Yeah.
So, um, I can talk about this in public session. Um, I gave you a, a bio and curriculum video of, of Dr. Dylan McNamara, who has come forward as a strong, um, in my mind, a very strong candidate to replace Jessica Little as the outgoing director of student support services. Jessica will be with us up until the December holiday. Um, uh, and as you know, she's leaving for personal reasons. She loves her job, but, um, has these good reasons to, to resign. Uh, we will miss her greatly. She's done an awesome job, and I'll talk more about her and embarrass her later on in the fall. But, um, she really has just been outstanding, and I enjoyed being her colleague. But she's done a lot in the district. Um, so when she tendered her resignation in July, after I picked myself up off the floor, just picked myself off, uh, sort of got to work and thinking about what, what are we gonna do with a, an app, with a void there? Uh, Dylan currently, um, leads in the Burlington School District as the executive director of student support services. And under that auspices, part of that is special ed, being a special ed director. There's no other job like, in, in Vermont, like the one we have here in Essex Town, because we've cobbled things onto it over the last couple of decades, from bus coordination to, um, English language learner proficiency, to resupervising nurses and school counselors, and, um, now universal pre-K. So it's, it's a, a pretty big job, and no matter who the candidate was, they're not gonna have all the requisite experiences to come hit the, the ground running. Dylan, um, had permission to interview and to accept the job, should be offered to him to come in, um, starting in mid, probably the first or second week of January, so that he can help the leadership team in Burlington get into FY seventeen and close out the service plan. Like us being sorry that Jess is leaving, they too would be sorry to see Dylan go. Um, you know, a PhD in psychology and being a practitioner as a psychologist for a number of years. I think he brings a great perspective in terms of family systems and, and systems for students that I think would be effective, including them in, in our schools. Um, he's got great, um, experience, albeit not as three or four years with special ed, knows the law, works closely with our colleagues in Chitlin Central currently through VCSA, which is a local council of special ed administrators, um, works closely with Erin and, and with, and with Jessica. So when I think about the possibility of a merger and what that looks like in terms of serving now five hundred children with disabilities, I think that he would be a strong, a really strong leader, um, in helping us facilitate and execute a merger. He knows, he's, he's a resident of Essex Town. He has children in our schools, um, both at the elementary school and founders. So he knows us. It's why he wanted to come here and serve his community. There's a interview, or an interview conversation committee, um, on Wednesday, um, on the thirtieth. Representatives from each building. Um, I met with four groups of teachers, letting them know that even though it's an interview, it's pretty much, I'm gonna advance him as a candidate for the board's approval, because I'm afraid we'd lose him if, if we didn't. If we didn't have a candidate, I'd have to patch things together, which is really not a good idea. Um, I had some people on the wing, former, people who are now retired to come in, and Trumark, I can help for the year. But I, um, I, I think it would have been too risky. And because Dylan is available and had the permission from his superintendent, I felt it was important to offer him a year and a half contract. And so we would finish out school year fifteen, sixteen, and, uh, work up to the merger on July first, two thousand seventeen. And at that time, I think the new board will have made some decisions on what the leadership structure looks like. He knows there's some risk in that, but he really wants to, he really wants to serve Essex.
How's he feel about coordinating buses?
I see.
He's like, fix you. I'm busted simmer, I'm not coming.
He, I, I asked him if he'd go as far as getting his CDL, and he said no. You know, he, uh, he knows the, he knows how unique it is. Uh, he also will be, I've asked him if he would consider using vacation, parts of vacation time that he has currently to come work with us. Um, and he said he would, so we have a three-day leadership training, like principals and district leaders to go to around systems analysis and strategic planning. And he agreed to come to three days with us this, over the course of this year. So he's gonna be working with us, being, you know, taking vacation time, and so he'll be ready. And including, hopefully not have to deal with buses as much as Jessica is.
Mm.
Starting now, we're not, we're no longer in the TransFinder business. You know, we, we did all that work, because there was a vacuum. But my feeling is as we go fo- forward, we're not, we're not in the TransFinder business, you know, that's, so he wouldn't have to do any of that work.
Well, you know, his resume is very impressive, so.
Yeah, definitely.
He's a, he was a class act. I've worked with him for a few years now. So I, I would, I mean, look forward to, you know, considering, um, approving my request that he be offered a contract starting in January two thousand sixteen, probably next time he, and it would be, his contract would be commensurate with what we currently do with Jessica.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay.
There'd be a little bit of a gap between Jessica leaving and him coming.
Several weeks, yeah. But I, I think we'll, we've got just great teachers, great principals, you know, we'll be, we'll be okay. And if I real, if I really needed him, I think he'd be here. I wanted to update you on two more, three more things. We've been, with the advent of, of, um, um, the new state standards and thinking more, um, as educators about how we report out to parents, um, we really have moved away from a traditional model of we report out, um, you know, three times a year, four times a year, to making sure that parents know they have access to teachers whenever they need them, in terms of an update on how their children are doing. Formerly, we, we meet with parents three times a year, starting this year, two days in the fall, in October, and one day in April. And those have been traditionally, traditionally been held in really high regard, cause it really is an opportunity to have a more formal conference with, with parents. And teachers are committed to that model and look forward to it, but also know their responsibility in, uh, making sure that the month of October and the month of April are times that we visit with, with mom and dad to give a more formal update on how kids are, are doing. And at the middle level, as we think about launching personal learning plans, also an opportunity to start formulating goals with, with middle-level kids. Feedback that we've gotten from parents and from, and from teachers over the last couple of years around reporting out, parents do want that ongoing real information about how their kids are doing and making sure they're on target. Having walked up through the four or five multi-age classrooms, um, just the other day, and looking at what kids' goals and aspirations are, and parents' aspirations. Parents want the best for their kids around learning, um, and they wanna know that, that they're being successful. So we have to be really committed to that ongoing, ongoing communication. One piece of feedback has been when we meet with families in October, um, around how kids are doing, when the report card comes out, um, in the latter part of, right around Thanksgiving, I think it was on like December first, or whatever that time is. In some ways, it's a repeat of what they heard during the conference time in October, uh, cause it really is just another, if you take Thanksgiving out, it's just another three weeks later, um, than what we had talked about earlier. So the recommendation, what's being looked at across our region, is to go to a two-time-a-year, um, report card system, where a report card goes out in January, so a month later, um, and then again at the, at the end of the school year. Still have a lot of emphasis, um, on the parent conferences and opportunities for parents to hear how their kids are doing. But that having, taking that second, the first trimester out and making a two-semester system, um, is where we'd like to go, starting this year. What is, go ahead, Dawn.
You would, though, initiate, say, someone who's in need of remedial help sooner, you would initiate that.
There's no question with, what Jessica's been talking about a lot is the multi-tiered system of support, which we have in all three buildings. So especially kids who are not at the standard, parents are hearing way before the conference days in October, that the kids need more support, because they're, they're entitled to that. What's gonna be really key for us is that we have a, a parent conference that's, um, spot-on, that's comprehensive, that's well-managed, that has authentic, real-time student work to be able to show parents how their kids are performing. We're having those conversations with faculties this fall. It can't just be, and I'm, I'm being silly when I say this, but it can't be, what would you like to know about Johnny since September first? We have to be, you know, take the lead in those conferences and make sure, now that we've got standard curriculum and standard assessment, teachers are gonna be talking about the same content standards and the same performance measures that we use to determine. and the same performance measures that we use to determine whether the kids are, are doing well or not. So, that's the commitment that, that we need to make at each building level, that we have conferences. Even at the middle school, we've got kids that are gonna be in some conference, that we've got some standardization around what that looks like. The bottom line being that the thirty minutes that you have with parents may not be adequate in addressing those needs, so you have to commit, as teachers, we need to commit to, in some cases, more time for that to happen.
Thirty minutes? It's fifteen, I don't know, place it fifteen or twenty. That's, that would probably be my biggest concern, is if this is the major area, we do wanna make sure that it, there's time for a good conversation.
Yeah.
Because if that's only until midway through, you could potentially have parents feeling that they're already halfway through, and now I'm getting this feedback.
Yeah.
And that could be really scary for some parents, especially when they're getting higher up in the grades. So, it would have to be very strategic in making sure that that's not what, that there, there is quality time, that's also private enough for parents to have those sorts of conversations with the teacher, with the student.
Yeah. There's the academic performance, and then there's the conversations you need to have with a teacher about your child, and both are equally important. Jump rope is not the panacea at the middle school, but what jump rope is offered to families is a real-time look at their kids in any given content area with a much smaller grain size. And because those, those portals are open all the time, parents, if they're following your child's progress, should be able to, and I actually do a presentation, probably you might be interested, of for other parents who haven't seen jump rope, it's pretty, it's pretty interesting in that it takes time to get your head wrapped around, because there's so much information, and how do you glean what's most important. But the need to wait for a conference or a report card is no longer really the case in grade six, eight. And we don't have that in K-five. But the feedback I've gotten over the last few years is that parents don't understand the standards. You know what I mean? The, the report card goes home, but not all of them really are aware of what, what it means. So, we have to do a better job, and maybe jump rope is one way to do that, to help define what, what we're, what we're asking kids to know and be able to do.
Would that be an easily adaptable system down to the K-level?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. But I don't think we're ready for it.
But the technology is.
The technology is there, but we're using the VCAT report card. But that is a point in time. Jump rope is a, is a journey across a whole hundred and seventy-eight days. You can see your kid moving the entire time, and VCAT, it's, it comes out on this date. Yeah.
Is it potentially filled on, you know, just in advance of that date, too, where jump rope is in theory like a replacement for a gradebook in.
That's what it is, yeah.
Old-time teacher world.
Yeah.
And VCAT is a project to complete before the report card deadline?
Correct. And I, you've, we've moved in the monitor reports from, to a, a standards-based reporting, so the, the report cards, in my mind, are still really important. You know, we need to look at, because I put a lot of stock in teachers being able to tell parents what, where their kids are as, as mathematicians, what does a three mean? Because I think that that's more authentic and more, more robust than what a statewide assessment. So, I'm, I'm not at all opposed to workers. I think they have a role. But I think how we, when we deliver that and how we talk about that, I think is what we're trying to bend the curve on that.
And is that something that some time has been spent with teachers or whatever support might be necessary to sort of create some consistency around what the conference will be or what the takeaways are?
Yeah. Teachers are very excited about it. It gets them to look at the conference differently. But there has to be a standardization, knowing that every team is a little bit different, but it can't, clearly can't be loosey-goosey. I'm not in the support of fifteen-minute conferences. You can't, what's fifteen minutes? So, we add another day to conferences this year, you know? And so, the reason for doing that was to make that a better satisfying experience for both the teacher and the parent. So, there are, there also was a point when, if, and this is, again, I supported this at the time, if teachers could demonstrate that they accomplished all of their conferences, they were able to not be at school on those, on the days that parent conferences happened. That's changed now. It came out through Kim and Dan's work, working with teachers this past year. So, even if you don't have conferences, you're at work. So, my feeling is that we spend the quality time that I think that parents deserve to make sure that it's more than fifteen minutes. And again, those conversations are happening now. And we will watch it, we will monitor it, we will get feedback on it. It isn't gonna be, hey, it'll be wonderful. You know, we'll make sure that, that it's working, and if, if we need to make adjustments, we're gonna make adjustments as we go.
And then you had said that you had done a jump rope thing for parents, or Kevin has. Do we record those? Like, is there a way for parents who can't get to meetings to sort of see it after the fact? Or if we don't kindly, thinking.
Yeah, I think.
I bet as much of anything, how to use jump rope as a tool is a learning process for teachers, a learning process for parents, a learning process for kids?
I think there is a PowerPoint, I don't know if, I think it is published, it might be on Kevin's blog. But I, I think it'd be great to bring in Kevin, Andrew Casperson, Eric Peterbecker, teachers that are really articulate about its use, but it might be a, a fun presentation for the board to see what that looks like.
I just think the other thing is, you know, the continuity, because just even thinking myself, you know, I've got three different, like, reporting systems that I'm dealing with. So, jump rope's different than the high school system, and sometimes it's just overwhelming for parents. And I just look for that, the more that we can be consistent across the board, I think the easier you're gonna have it for parents to be able to look at this, understand the program, not feel like they're constantly having to relearn.
Yeah.
And understand the wording, I think the more it'll be utilized.
You're absolutely right. I, I can't keep thinking about the future and what a merger might bring, and this is, you know, how we engage and how to monitor, report to parents is gonna be a big conversation.
Thank you.
Boy, I've just been stealing all your time.
Yeah, that's.
How are you gonna tell them, "Morning"?
Let's talk math, algebra.
I like algebra.
Me too. I took algebra too. Barely got through it by the start of my teeth. So, there's been some discussion about algebra one and its, and its place in the math continuum starting in middle school. And I don't really have much to report tonight other than to update on you what the conversations would look like here before. So, several weeks ago, and I don't even know where it started, it might have been a, a parent or two had talked to perhaps a, a math educator at the middle school, and there was mention of the algebra looking different in the next year or the year after. I'm not sure what the context was. And then, that, that piece of information went out to the parent group, and some people asked some really good questions about what's up with algebra. So, tonight I just wanna give you an update on what's up with algebra. First of all, it's not an Essex middle school conversation. We've joined with our colleagues from Chittenden Central, high school principal and math teachers at the high school, Lori Singer from ADL, her math leads, and Marcy Lewis from, from, from Westford, our two curriculum coordinators, and, and one of our math experts in the state who heads up with his wife Vermont Math Institute, which is a master's program for mathematics for educators. He's gonna be, in a pro bono way, be facilitating some early discussions with math educators on new, with the advent of new state standards and new thinking about how kids learn, where, where should algebra fit on the continuum of, of, of options, recognizing that there are some students, many students in fact, who, who will most likely be eligible to take calculus as a senior. So, we're always gonna keep, make sure that that, that's a really important thing that we offer all students. So, all that's happened up to this point is there's been several conversations with, with that group to look at several options. One is to keep it the way it is, and just to continue once they've gone through the curriculum in seventh and eighth grade in math, and they have algebra in, in eighth grade. And for those kids who are ready, maybe from seventh grade, sort of the seminar sort of model. Another option, obviously, is to look at, and this all has to be contingent on what the high school can do, right? Because you can't do it for middle school without knowing what's next after ninth grade. Hence, the math team needs to be involved with that. You know, the question of doubling up comes up. Doubling up is hard, no matter how you look at it, freshman, sophomore, or junior. That's reality for some kids. Doubling up does happen in terms of taking things together, like algebra and geometry. So, that, you know, that'll be discussed. Opportunities for accelerated mathematics as a freshman, as a single thing in the fall and something indifferent in the spring has been talked about. So, they're just starting to explore, you know, what the options are. As importantly, for my, in my, for my angle, is making sure that we have a series of parent engagement sessions and that, that we start scheduling those now, that it's not an after, afterthought. But I think we need to let parents know that beginning, I'll just pick a date, October, which is next month, starting in October, and then a, a series of sessions where, either through a fishbowl experience, being able to listen in on the conversation, I, I think is a kind of an interesting thing to offer. We've never done it before. But also have engagement sessions where actually parents will be able to ask questions and share their, share their ideas and concerns. So, I just wanted to lay any concern on the part of our board that we're, we're moving fast, because we're not. But the conversation has happened, because there's different views on how best to address algebra in middle school today.
There's been multiple rumors out there about what was happening with it, too.
Perhaps, yeah. I didn't, they didn't come into my office.
But there's not actually any changes that have happened, okay?
No. But there are, there are going to be conversations, and that really is all I have to report at, at, tonight, is that.
There's a big one going on in the Essex Facebook feed.
The Essex VT one, right?
Still currently.
Is it still current? It was older, I think. I think that's where it was brought to my attention.
I would agree with people that talk to building leadership. There's four principals, and they're, and they're well, you know, they're gonna tell you what I just told you.
One thing, Mark, that I'm, I think that I had asked, but I think it would be important to confirm that for current seventh graders, which I think is the group that is concerned about this, because those are the folks who were told in the spring they were going to be accelerated, and then told in the fall they were not accelerating, and that wasn't really happening. And so, what I'm understanding is that they would be doing nothing differently right now if they were going to accelerate seventh and eighth grade and do algebra than they are doing currently. While this is being figured out, they're not at a disadvantage for whatever option is pursued.
That's what I'm told.
Okay.
And I, and I believe that.
That makes sense. And then, I, I think that helps people to be able to take the time to learn and engage around the topic. And then the other question is timing for engagements or whatever outcome from this would be important from a standpoint of budget, if it were to have a budget impact. So, right now, we don't have a seminar instructor. He had retired. Whether or not there are the current resources in any of the buildings to pursue that model has impact potentially on budget. So, I'm hopeful that whatever conversations happen or potential options come out of it, that is a consideration for timeline.
How is that class functioning right now with retirement of the teacher? What, what's going on this year?
Yeah, well, teachers, we don't have an algebra teacher. We have been taught on team, eighth graders. I assume it's functioning well, Dan, I don't.
So, there is an algebra class for eighth graders taught by a million of, of different teachers?
Believe it or not, what prompted this for math teachers. You know, this wasn't, it came from math teachers saying, we've got a really robust seventh and eighth grade math program. We want to make sure that kids go deep, really deep, before we, we accelerate or move kids into a content area that they might be able to master, but without some more, you know, fundamental sorts of things that went deeper into the regular seventh. They were concerned that, is it sustainable? So, that's where it came from. They're, they really think, they really think the seventh and eighth grade math curriculum is really rich. But we're always gonna have kids who are ready for the next step. So, so that's what prompted the whole conversation. But I think the next communication should come, and I've said this to Kevin, should come from all, should come from a team. So, it's not looked at as one principal's leading this. I think it's a group of people who, who wanna have a substantive discussion about how, should it look different? Not when it's gonna look different, but should it look different?
Parents would love to hear from the math teachers themselves.
Yeah.
And I think at the high school, I will say, having had so many kids go through it, making sure that, that, that message is coming from the high school, because really its impact on students as they head to college is very related to what the offerings are at the high school and their ability to get through some of the most rigorous, you know, program offerings. So, I think having Rob Riordan or whomever would be the appropriate person there.
Sure.
Be part of that would make sense. And I'm wondering if student voice wouldn't be interesting, because I did hear from my freshman that she heard it wasn't being offered and that they were gonna have to double up as freshmen. And she said, you need to know some algebra stuff for geometry, Mom. And, you know, she's a kid who loves math and happens to be doubling up in science. So, I'm wondering if there is somewhere in the process that would not necessarily have to be.
Yes, good point.
For, for a board presentation, but more for the folks who are looking at this from a practitioner's standpoint, checking in with those freshmen who are doing the very things that they're considering asking freshmen to do, whether or not they envision that to be a possibility. She, like, went through a litany of things that would make it really hard to be doubling up on both, but I really love both of them. You know, I don't know if I could do that, and what else wouldn't I be able to take? Or, you know, it was, it was pretty, from the mouths of not so much babes, there are kids who've been there, so. And I'm sure it's not just my kid. I'm sure it's plenty of others.
No, it's a good point.
Especially all the other kids doubling up on sciences right now and trying to do any sort of band or language. I mean, it is a balancing act.
Yeah, the way of the day hasn't changed in fifty years.
Absolutely. Yeah. And, and they, and I, I can't recall exactly all that's required, but it's not like they have all this slush time or, like, fun stuff going on. And there's, I don't wanna say that they're not finding math and science fun, but I think that you're right, you might come up against the, what about language, where does that fit? Or, you know, I'm trying to think of the electives. I'm sure that there's an intent. Oh, she was saying, you've got gym and you've got health. Like, there are some things that is, are expected of the freshman experience that I, I'm wondering if you even run out of time. Because there's no study hall, I don't think, and my kid's schedule, but maybe.
Regardless of the actual content, I get it, if you get algebra as eighth grade, that gets you one step further along. But I think arguably the most consistent thing that we've heard, that I feel like we've heard over the last four or five years, second maybe only to busing chaos in the first week, is when the ninth graders come back in April and talk to us, almost every single one of them said, yeah, I took algebra. It was the most important thing. I don't know if it's algebra or a highly rigorous class that kinda goes, oh, this is what high school's gonna be like? Oh, dear. Oh, I mean, I'm not sure that it has to be algebra.
A management software intensely.
Yeah, but that, that higher level of intensity and rigor. It happens to be algebra, and that's great.
Yeah.
But if algebra were changed somehow to whatever, maintaining an opportunity for the eighth graders to experience a more high school rigorous class is crucial.
Or independent, or, you know, I, I, I'm guessing they find themselves challenged in their teen stuff, too, but it's a different, that method was a pretty different delivery model.
Yeah.
That required them to independently manage their time a little differently. And that is probably more similar to the high school every other day thing. And, you know, nobody's banging on your door to say, get your stuff done. It's, yeah.
Oh, I bang on my daughter's door a lot.
But you're right, Dan. All those kids that come back and talk to us really reflected on that experience, having been challenging, but one they were happy to have been a part of.
And in terms of the testing and such, because it's another thing that they don't necessarily, in terms of the practicing for the midterm, the final, it was like their only chance to practice this or anything before high school. Which, again, is a different setup, which is good for them to have that hands-on before they do it.
What I'm encouraged by is that it's a collaborative effort, that it's not about getting kids ready for high school, in my mind, although I get it's important that we challenge kids and get them ready for the rigors of the life. But, you know, knowing that our transition wants to be seamless between eighth and ninth grade, and we're working with high school staff to say, you know, how do we get kids ready for higher-level mathematics? Let's do this together, rather than them saying, this is what you need to do in ninth grade, get them ready. And that, you know, we flipped that paradigm, I think, a little bit in this conversation, saying, what do we think as K-eight educators and as nine-twelve educators, how do we make that seamless? And that's what's, that's, that's a different conversation that we're having today, and I'm excited for that.
Thank you.
Well, lastly, I know you've been waiting for the last document, two-point-eight. This is my annual report on communication support to the board, and I've highlighted some things. I mean, every year I add a couple new things that just come to mind without just putting too much information here. So, I'm not gonna go necessarily through it unless you'd like me to. The one thing I will point out is on page two, I was sort of in partial compliance. If we recall, there were some questions that parents had around residential status, and so I felt that I didn't do a very good job in, in one particular case. And I've. and, and in one particular case, um, and I've had months of atonement and I've realized what I've needed to do and that is to communicate more effectively, so there's a new, your current policy is on the website, but the new, there's a new set of procedures that are up there, they were up there in August, um, for parents to know, and it's all been communicated from each principal's office as well. In terms of what the expectations are on residency and truancy and what it means to be attending school on a regular basis. So that's in place, if you choose to sup, to approve the, um, policy tonight, that will supersede what's on the website today.
If we, policy approved, I don't know.
The, the, well, the po, the policy on student attendance is in your package tonight and it would supersede what's on the website today, which was last reviewed in two thousand and five, I think.
Oh, for our reading again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry, I jumped around a little bit.
No, hang on to the next part.
But we're still working on this one.
Yeah, obviously, if we approve your bonding report, how does that change our policy? Okay, I got you.
I mean, thinking about last year, I know that transportation is weighing heavily because talking about that was like the motherload of two point eight, right? But, um, in terms of keeping you guys apprised, but that's, that'll be in next year's report. But again, I just can't speak highly enough of your feedback to me as important, because I can write all these things I think I'm doing and communicating to, but without feedback on whether or not it's helpful to you and keep you apprised, I, you know, that, so just to remind you, that's helpful for me to get that feedback.
You can say that a month later, right?
You can breathe now.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You know, I've put a fair amount of incidentals together every year, um, there's plenty to write about, I try to keep it to one page.
I don't think we'd ever be disappointed if you couldn't keep it to one page, because the information there is really, I mean, that, that to me is, it's not dry. That's, that's the life of the school, where you write those incidentals. If you could, I mean, if, if, and I suggest we do this, but it'd be kinda interesting, it's like the last ten pages of the yearbook, be all your incidentals. Because that, I mean, that really lays out, that's what happened in the year of the school. You know, it's a lot more interesting than, you know, this thing. As important as that is, that doesn't tell the story, your incidentals really do communicate a lot to us.
And if there are themes that you wanted me to address, so themes about student learning, themes about professional development, themes about parent engagement, if there are certain things, I could take that, I haven't, I've just sort of randomly moved around, but if, if that would be more helpful for you, I could also think about structuring it differently, the incidental piece.
From what I read, I like what I see.
Yeah, I guess.
I like that it's, it's just a little bullet point, and, and it's bullet points of what's happening and where.
And I think one of the things that I think we're pretty intentional to try and do is, to the extent we anticipate it as we're planning an agenda, those that should have, um, while this is, this class size information is frankly incidental, we're in compliance with our policy, it would come up separately as evidence in a monitoring report somewhere, um, one of them. Those are incidentals that when, and I think we've noticed this as a pattern, it comes up every fall. Mark and I thought about this earlier and Mark's like, yeah, I wanna put this on the agenda. So where we can think that this sort of incidental information needs an agenda item, we're trying to do that. So if, if we're not seeing something that you guys are seeing that is topical or should have a place, that it'll fall somewhere under policy, we are always looking to find out which policy it falls under, if it's gonna show up on our board agenda. But an incidental may have the importance of making sure it has a public conversation as well and that includes this type of thing and transportation and even algebra update that might have been incidental, but is also of interest to those watching.
And you can help shape the, the public nature of two point eight by, if you're hearing things that, um, or that you like some, my perspective on, because sometimes you hear things that I don't, so I'm always willing to, hope that doesn't happen often, but, you know, to.
Rachel does, because she's like in every book, no, I'm kidding. No, I know, we've been there.
You can always live on a public agenda too. We don't have to wait till the end of the year or once, you know.
And Mark, I think, mentioned that somewhere in here around helping to shape the agenda and we changed a little bit the agenda at the bottom. I just changed how we're categorizing our sort of reflection at the end of a meeting, not to belabor or prolong our meetings, but to make sure that we're intentionally moving it up there, that if there are things that we wanna see on the next agenda or a coming agenda, when we can get it in there, that we've had that conversation here and that if it requires a follow-up, we're gonna get it. And so that is something, if we don't talk about it here, but you think about it later, you can individually email me and then Mark and I have it. I put those things directly into my notes for our next agenda planning meeting, which always happens the week before the next meeting. So, um, from a process standpoint, if we miss it here, you just let me know and, um, particularly if it's of timely nature or especially an important topic, we're gonna get it on as soon as we can.
I think it's great that you guys are usually very responsive, because sometimes we may not think of it till we see what is on the agenda.
Right.
So Madam Chair, to move us along, can I make the motion that we accept, um, approve the annual monitoring report?
Yes, you may, may I have a second?
I was looking for it.
I'm not, I'm not, wow, thank you. Thank you especially for moving along, but that I get to be madam on top of it, that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Don.
I will second that.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Was that two point eight?
That was two point eight and passes five zero, no, that is completely fine, I'm not kidding, that was kinda cool. Please don't feel the need to do that all the time. Thank you, Mark, that was a great recap, appreciate it. All right, let me get down where, where we are, okay. So, um, on, we have a second meeting and possible approval of our state mandated policies. And, um, we had pushed a bunch of this stuff from the previous agenda and hopefully we're in a position to feel as though we might be able to move forward if there are any questions or if we wanna, do we probably wanna have a motion and then conversation? Is that, Don, what I should be requesting? A motion to
Motion to accept, approve.
For second reading and possible adoption? And then a conversation?
Don't you, you should, what, you do the reading and then act on it?
One at a time.
Sure, I didn't know if we needed to open it for discussion first.
No, we gotta post it on your agenda.
Okay, perfect, all right. So any comments or questions on the policies that we had for second, for student attendance, child nutrition and wellness?
Yeah, they were good.
They're clean and they're.
I don't know what my questions are, they work, but.
I just find it interesting that food, and this is not necessarily here, but just generally food can't be used as reward or punishment, but yet you mandate that, kids have to have certain things on their tray, so some can see that as a punishment. And this is discussion we philosophically have.
In your real, your day job.
Grind butter, um, group, but, um, but it is not technically the way, the intent of it is not that way, so, um, philosophically, I hate that, but.
But it needs the letter of the law.
As loud as you can right now.
In your other hat.
I'm trying.
In your other hat, you'd like to see it differently, in this hat.
Yes, in this hat, I understand the intent.
As there is no discussion of these two policies, I make the motion that we accept the second reading and approve the mandated state policies of student attendance and child nutrition and wellness.
Any second?
Thank you, I will second that.
Cashel will second, and Ra, even Rachel would, we have a second and a third on that one. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I pose nay, pass, or, I'm sorry, no, I didn't vote both ways, there was no nays, passes five zero, sorry about that guy.
Oh, my gosh.
What you said, um, Dawn, I almost called you Hill.
I've been called worse. I made the motion to accept the second reading and approve the mandated state policies to include student attendance, child nutrition and wellness.
Thank you.
And then, we're on second reading, but we didn't say that this would be for possible adoption.
When I was asked to go back and check with V S B A, Nicole Mace, to make sure that this new policy on bullying, harassment and hazing met federal requirements and it does. And so you probably have in your book done a federal policy on harassment, because there is no state policy on harassment.
That was, that, and that was the other part of the question.
That's what prompted it, yeah. So in checking with the legal counsel of V S B A, this guy covers all state and federal, state policies on bullying or, and hazing and federal policy on harassment, it's all.
So, just for clarification then, Mark, will we be deleting or removing those other separate policies? So this will
This will just automatically supersede.
Two or three of them, I think. It will supersede the previous, all three.
And I've reviewed with the school counselors and we didn't wait for the board to approve, so the new procedures related to this new policy that you will approve next month are already in play.
Okay.
And they are different.
And the procedures are actually up at our website, are those the current and accurate sets of procedures? Okay.
I believe so.
I, I think that like on the homepage is a.
Yeah, they've always been up there, but I'm not sure if they put the new procedures, they might be waiting for the, they have to check here.
Okay.
Because they have hazing in there now, the old ones didn't have hazing.
And I'm just, it's just the way the page lays out with the footnote, okay.
So I could bring back if you're ready for that final reading or approval on the twelfth of October.
That sounds great, and just again for clarification, the procedures live on our website, they are not going to live within this policy.
No, but I want them to be under the school board, it'll say policy.
And then beneath it'll say procedure and you'll be able to click the second tier down. And so maybe, Mark, as this comes back, not because we need to approve procedure, but when it comes back for its final reading and approval, to include in the packet the procedures, that would be terrific. Does that, is that word for everybody? Because it references procedures. Because those should change as appropriate and don't require our approval later, so it's just a matter so that we have them, take a look at them. Thank you. All right, so
So there's no action on that?
We don't need an action then?
Yeah, we're, because we're just reading, we're not actually.
We're just reading, so it'll come back for final reading and approval.
I'll make that one for next.
All right.
Remind me.
Do we have the, I was gonna say, we get down a minute, so Dan is gonna be.
We are planning ahead.
Make a motion.
But that's not a agenda plan, isn't it?
We're gonna be so efficient that we're, I'll put it in the next slide. So thank you very much, you guys, thank you, Mark.
Thank you for finding that out.
Yeah, thank you. And so we are doing four point one and I am going to apologize to Rachel, who I think already did her four point three. You're ahead of schedule because we had, Mark and I, and I probably should have let you know.
No wonder I got so confused.
I know, I know. So because we had to move four point one from last meeting to clear the agenda for transportation, we looked at this meeting knowing it was gonna be rather full and the next meeting didn't have any monitoring reports on it. I don't recall as we looked at our work calendar, so we made the executive decision and forgot to tell Rachel that she was off for this week, but thankfully all done and you'll be good for two weeks from now. You're way ahead of schedule now, that almost never happens in my life, so I appreciate you doing that, thank you. Um, so I'm gonna ask Dan to take us through this one and, um, we are on governing style, four point one and monitoring our own performance under this category.
Four point one governing style, which is, um, in my interpretation, not written on here, but in my interpretation of that is always summarized in a sense of, you know, we're outward looking, we're, we're coming up with the goal and we're saying, Mark, make this happen, not, Mark, here's how you make it happen. And I feel like, um, over, how many years have we been doing policy governance? Six now?
Six, probably, I think.
I, I feel like we've kinda got it figured out, I feel like we're actually doing pretty well at this. I did, I, I really tried to figure out, how can I say insubstantial compliance on, on any of these? And I really felt like we, we were doing well. The one that we've had, I think, the most discussion on in the past was number six, about how well we monitor ourselves, and I think that is one that we talked about in our retreat. We said we gotta do better at that, we talked about it at the previous retreat, said we gotta do better at it. And I, I will say, thank you, Cashel, I think you're one of the reasons that we are doing better at it, because you
Send us her.
Speaking of policy on harassment, you harass us every week to, to fill out the, you, you get us the evaluation, so I think we're getting that evaluation done by all of us more frequently and, and we're having, we've changed the end of the agenda to say, hey, let's talk about this for a second. So I really do feel like, you know, it says if we're not in compliance, then write something, well, we're in compliance, I think, but I thought it was worth writing something there because that is the one that we've improved on. I feel like that's one we've made some movement on in the last, in the last year. The other one that I thought about was in, um, development. And I put in compliance, I feel like we have done some neat stuff there, I thought the meeting that we did, um, over in Montpelier on the policy governance meeting. Um, I appreciate the fact that was, that was with any stones throw of my office, it made it very easy for me to be there. But I thought that was a neat development opportunity for some of us. But where my question in that lay and if you feel like we should be in, in, uh, substantial compliance continues to be, how do we do training, you, Don?
I'm still waiting.
That, I, that was where I had sort of my comments.
I, I would, I would certainly
Move us back.
Move us to insubstantial compliance if we feel like that process was still not there.
And for me, it hasn't been a problem because I've been here before.
Right.
If I was brand new, I'd have been totally lost, but yeah, seriously.
And, um, and I think sadly we took for granted that you are not new to this show and this rodeo and when we did our orientation with Cashel, then didn't do that same type of orientation with you. And I think what's still lacking in that is, um, we can avail people the opportunity to go to like the trainings that Montpelier offers. It's making that connection to our in-practice and, um, spending a little time with the policies and, and we never did that with Don, so I don't feel comfortable having us be in complete compliance on this one, because, um,
It's fine.
Yeah, but I, it, it doesn't feel great and I'm really grateful that you are learning so quickly or just being refreshed really on what you knew.
It's great, because policy governance was something we had just started looking at and learning about and going to training about and then to come back and see it fully implemented is, is pretty awesome, actually.
Um, really excited to hear you've, because that's, we were just studying it and trying to figure out how it would work and I'm.
And we traveled all over the state, learning different, doing different training shows, this is great.
I'm glad to hear that you find it to be effective in practice, because that's, but I think that we continue to not be disciplined in that area and I take responsibility for it and I, I am, again, gonna express my appreciation that you've been learning by fire and hopefully comfortable to let us know when you're not, you know, familiar. And maybe, should we be able to get that in among our meetings in October at some point?
Sure.
You know, that would be helpful, because then we can start asking you to do monitoring reports.
There you go, I'd love to do that, once I understand.
No, totally understood, well, and I think, it, not to excuse us for not having been more formal in that process with you, but, um, some of it, even having been a little bit more formal with it with Cashel, is the time in experiencing it and here. And that part you're getting, sadly, well before you're getting us sitting down with the, the book with you. But, um, let's commit to doing that and let's move us, because I feel way too guilty to have us be in complete compliance.
We do not rate the overall category, but the subcategories.
Oh, she's breaking, okay.
So is that, would that be able to be just a friendly amendment?
Um, yeah, would you like me to write something up and bring it back next time and just say, here's what I said from number four? Or would you like to give me some language to put in there and, and call it an amendment and prove as, as, with amendment?
We can approve it as amended.
Yeah.
And say we're, we're insubstantial compliance.
Insubstantial compliance and just.
On number four.
Due to that, no standard process is in place to, um, train newly appointed board members.
Yeah, newly elected, ideally.
Newly elected, yeah, elected and appointed.
New board members.
New board members.
No formalized process to integrate the SBA offerings and local orientation.
So you could do that by doing a motion to do friendly amendment and then approving it, right?
Friendly amendment. I think so, yes, and then you'll approve it on the document, and then share it again with Lorna and everybody, and it'll go up on the website in its amended.
I'll, I'll write it in. Yeah. And if you don't like what I write, then email back.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, I think a sentence or two to that effect is, will be well crafted, I'm quite certain, confident that we can have a motion to approve with the friendly amendment.
So a motion to amend it?
Yeah. Well, motions, you make a friendly amendment, right?
Yes.
And then, and then separately a motion to approve.
And then, once the amendment's been made, then a motion to further.
Okay. Will you re, do you wanna, can he read us what the amendment will be, and then electronically do it later?
Uh, I'm writing, um, the board reports insubstantial compliance, uh, due to the, the fact that there is no standardized formal, standard formalized process in place to train new board members in the policies and, and procedures of.
Our school district.
Our district, or our policy governance, the.
School board governance process.
Ooh, nice.
It only takes five days to.
I know.
Process, well said, I'll put that in.
Awesome, okay, so I think the first on the, um, motion to make a friendly amendment was Rachel, maybe second, Cashel?
Yep.
And then Dan made a friendly amendment with Don.
Made, with Don's help.
And now I will have a motion to approve.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Oh.
You have to approve.
Oh, okay, all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Passes five zero, now a motion, I'll take a motion to approve the monitoring report four point one with the friendly amendment.
Now you can make a motion. I make that motion.
And second? Rachel seconding. We'll, we'll let that be heard for you. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero, thank you, Dan, and thank you, Rachel, in advance for next time around, we've got you on the docket.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to just make a, an op, maybe just a, um, an observation.
Yeah, we probably should have asked it, Mark.
No, 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 not about good wo, good work here, but I, I wonder when, you know, when Dan started talking about, you know, outward visioning and looking at the future, and thinking about sort of rather than reacting and the current stuff, I think about the likelihood of a merger, and whether or not it makes sense to revisit your goals for the year, um, and in order to evaluate wh, whether or not you've met the four point one, you might wanna look at what your goals are, and I think the goals might wanna, you might wanna be thinking about, do we wanna add a goal about how do we lead within a merged system? You know, what's, what do you need to do as a board, knowing that you're doing that as a single board, but what does it mean when we merge? And should you have some goals sort of outlined, maybe we wait till after the third, but I think we have to start thinking about a, a new, a new era.
Yeah, I think, and do.
Sounds like a work session, huh?
Yeah.
Like, when we merge, November fourth is gonna have to look, we're gonna have to start thinking differently about what the future does look like, and should your goals reflect that.
Right.
Yeah.
And that presumes, of course, I think among our responsibilities now are to inform and remind people to vote and express their opinion on it.
Yes.
Uh, you know, we may have a sense from the feedback we're receiving of a likely outcome of the November third vote. And I think even as we did our goals over the summer, we talked about the fact that we couldn't really be planning too much beyond that without knowing what that looked like, so I think it makes perfect sense that we would revisit goals after November third.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, frankly, regardless of the outcome almost, because, um, you know, we have appreciated the work of the study committee, we've, you know, deliberated the, um, position of our board and have supported as a majority the position of unification, and, um, we would have responsibility should this not be an affirmative vote in our community for, um, basically defending our position as why we can meet all the equity issues and expense matters, um, in the absence of unification, and, and so, I, we, I don't think, I think absolutely we must revisit this topic regardless after November third, and I think it is, um, hopeful and encouraging that we can see a path to a pre-K twelve district that is about the journey of the student and is about efficiency and effectiveness of resources for taxpayers and kids, um, but I, I appreciate that reminder, Mark.
Yeah, just thinking about in order, in order to sort of evaluate yourself, evaluating on what you've achieved, I'm just thinking it's, it's, it's gonna look different that way. So you're right, I don't wanna be premature about it. And I did, and I did, this stuff was clearly affected by November third, and I, I did point out, you know, in the, in the, I did add a bit in here saying, you know, one of our main focuses has been that outward look of talking about what does a merger look like? How do we, how will we do that, whether or not it ends up happening, that has been a focus of ours. Yeah. And I guess one, one reason, and this may have been premature, that I felt a little okay about being in compliance on number four is we might not ever train a new member. We, we may be done with that process.
Yeah. Hopefully it'll be a priority of a new board regardless, though, but yeah.
Right, but, but our, but we may never welcome a new, a new member into the, into this group. Now, you know, obviously if, if the merger does not happen, there will be attrition, and eventually that will happen, and we'll wanna get that in place, but. Yeah. I, I didn't wanna put in here, and we should make a training system, well, let's talk about that on November fourth, you know, because we don't need to do that.
Yeah. Yeah.
We need to do something else, if, depending on how that vote goes.
I think one of the things I thought about when thinking about this, not in the, and I'm just gonna make it as conversation, because it's not an impact on the approval of this, but I was, I was thinking about governing style, and I was thinking about the urgency of the transportation system, and I'm like, maybe not as outward visioning as we were in a sort of reactionary mode, and yet it's that sort of place where I, I think we do try and pause and figure out where did this fall in policy, we have a transportation policy, we've got a, you know, communication to the board and a communication to our community on treatment of students and, and families, so while it felt like a reactionary time for us, I think in the practical applications of both policy governance, our role in governing and being sort of, having people both feel heard and know where our position was on things, um, without feeling defensive, I can sort of sit back and kind of reflect on it and say, yeah, it would have been nice if it hadn't felt so reactive, but I think it was also, even in operating in policy governance those times, that there has to be a forum that you do your best to keep it in policy and allow for, you know, a voice on it.
Yeah, I think, I think it.
And so I think, while I've reflected quite a bit since our last meeting, just to try and think about things, and I thought, okay, well, and I don't know if we did, um, an evaluation tool sent to all of us after the last meeting.
We didn't.
And I'm, I'm hoping, and that if you guys would indulge me, just in trying to reflect back to yourselves on that meeting, doesn't happen to have, have to happen right here, but if you would send us both.
Essentially, it's, well, you can pick the date, so, yeah.
You can just change the date, okay. So if we, if you guys have time and are willing to do that, you know, these things could happen and come up for us on various topics, and it would help me to know if you guys have any thoughts or feedback or suggestions for how we do that differently another time, or what we thought went as well as we could have expected.
I, I think an important point is understanding there's reactionary and then there's reacting.
Yeah.
Just because something unusual happens and we didn't plan it, and we had to have a reaction, doesn't mean we're inherently reactionary. I mean, it'd be kinda weird to go, ah, something really bizarre just happened, well, let's not even, yeah, we're not even gonna bother talking about it.
Thank you. We're not gonna, right. Well, in an ideal world, we're responsive, as it was reactive, and I'm hoping that when we reflect on it, we can kind of think about that.
Right.
Did we do the best we could in being responsive versus sort of, like you said, reactionary?
Right.
Like, I don't think that's our normal MO, but even in those instances.
That was a whole different situation, too.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I appreciate whatever feedback you guys have for that meeting, um, to help us.
Did you see, did you see how many brownies were there? That's how people were feeling.
Thank you, so nice again. Yes, oh my gosh.
I did, I did, they were gone.
Thank you.
Right, I think it tells you more about how I was feeling.
Kimberly, that was awesome, she might have saved us that night.
Yeah.
Um, and the disappointment, I think, from the end of that meeting was that there's so many amazing things were shared after that, that figuring out how collectively we can kind of harness that interest in those things that are celebrating, what we're really charging, Mark and our educators with is outcomes for kids, in the absence of getting them to and from school, they do have to get to and from school.
Right.
But, um, I would love for us to figure out how to help folks share that same enthusiasm around the good work that's happening, that's producing outcomes for kids, so. All right, that was beaten out one.
Essex Town had a strong heartbeat, good to listen to that occasion.
That's right.
I, we may have been lynched with pitchforks, but I, I think we should have just switched the agenda. And done, and done the, the. I think pitchforks would have come out.
I think so. Don't, you guys hang out for like another forty minutes or so, and then we'll be ready to take up transportation. Oh goodness, that might, I don't know, Dan, I, you know, I might have let my vice chair handle that meeting that day.
All right, I, I will, I will not make that motion.
But that is a really interesting point.
All right, so, um, we review and approve the monitoring report, we are on to approving the warning for the vote, so this is, um, this is, goes in the papers, announces, like when we warn our budget?
Yes.
Yes.
So it's the same type of thing? Um, and it, did we take an action on this, Mark, did we actually take an action?
You have to take an action, make a motion, assign it, then you sign it.
Okay.
I make the motion that we approve the warning to be posted for November.
I'm really still typing.
This was vetted and revised several times by attorneys, and this is.
I'm sorry, I make the motion that we approve the warning to be posted for November third, twenty fifteen vote on the Unified Union School District proposal.
Any seconds?
Oh, second.
Second, Cashel, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero, thank you, I'm gonna pass it around for signatures.
John Sonic, our school clerk, will sign tomorrow at Cheryl's office.
And are you getting it through?
We're gonna deliver tomorrow, yeah, and then we'll post in three public places, and it won't go in the ER Essex Town reporter, Essex reporter till the, uh, week of the twelfth.
I'll just give it tomorrow.
Five days before the vote.
Did you have a pen?
Is my pen?
Oh, here.
Will it be the six, whatever that's, yeah, yeah, that week, whatever that day, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, maybe.
Oh, I was gonna say, okay, it's okay, it's sound right.
Oh my god, his house is a cesspool. She's worried about getting her germs on my pen.
As long, yeah, as long as you get your dates, you don't mess that up, then you're big.
Yeah.
I believe we have five candidates for four slots for our, um, board, for board seats, so, um, that is sort of what we hoped might happen, that we get folks interested in not unfilled seats and appointed seats, and.
Can we hear who those candidates are at this point, or is that?
Um, the last candidate, so, um, my petition is not back in yet, I don't know if Brendan's is, is yours back in, Don?
Mine's in.
Um, Don's and Al Bombardie's are back in, um, mine and Brendan's are still out, and getting there on my thirty signatures. Um, they're due by the end of this week, and then there was another person who had picked up on it some point this week, um, and it wasn't a name I recognized, but I, um, so I, I shot a text to Brendan just to see if it is somebody who had been in touch with him, just around sort of roles and responsibilities, and what's the work look like, and what's the commitment, those are kind of, I think, important questions, just to understand, so. Um, if, if Brendan had not, then I may just reach out and see if she has any questions, and, um, if there's anything I can answer for her, just so we know. It looked as though she was seeking a two-year term, um, and Al had a, you know, returned his petition for a two-year term, so. We shall see. All right, so agenda planning, um, for the upcoming agenda, anything for Mark and I to bear in mind, other than what's on our work calendar? And anything that got moved from this week was moving to the next week, the next meeting on the twelfth.
So, so Rachel will be on.
Rachel is definitely on it.
I tried to look up the work calendar, but it wasn't, it was getting me wrong, so.
Do you know, I had a problem with that too, and.
What are you presenting next week?
Um.
Uh, four point three.
Four point three, Rachel is.
Couldn't access it, Rachel?
It, I was having, you know, actually just a lot of trouble with deadline in general, trying to get onto deadline from home on several occasions over the last couple of weeks.
I had had.
And I remember trying to get the work planned, and it wasn't letting me, when I opened it, it didn't look right, like it was still.
It's squashed.
There is, there is really, I.
Yeah, it looks.
Did that happen in, okay.
Well, I know, it's technical, you guys know that, you're right.
Well, I am not a computer, I, I like it, I know how to do things, but if they don't work the way I wanted to, I don't know how to fix it, um.
I'm gonna open the door right now, though.
Okay, I'll look into that with.
So, just, so, 'cause I did wanted to see if you guys had moved.
I don't know if I actually.
I didn't try to check, but I wasn't sure if it, it moved on there, but I just.
There we go, let me just open it up and see what else is on the docket.
I thought, I told you about that, I just wanted to.
Okay, so I, I did move it, I think I was in there playing around, so on governance process, I have us for four point three on the twelfth, and three point one, which is board superintendent relationship, which, let me see if I can tell us who did that one last night. So, and we don't hit them up again. Everybody holds their breath. I apologize for not having checked this before. What did I just say that one was?
Five point one.
Three point one.
Three point one, which is unity of control, um. Who did it last time? Ah, I did it. Fancy that. Cat o' the canary over here, um, we were in full compliance before, so I don't know if we've got any takers on that one. Only officially passed motions of the school board are binding on the superintendent of Essex Town School District is, um. Don, if we do your orientation, do you want this one?
Sure. Wow.
How's that for a deal? How's that, Mark, do you think they can?
Sure, I'm, I'm okay.
Okay.
It'll all be fun.
Don is our goddess of motions here, so I wanna make sure that, and this one, I think, um, we can share the previous document with you so that you can work from that one, and, um, having been previously in full compliance, it's, I think, unless you're noticing something
Obviously, yes.
that isn't seeming that way, which is always, actually, I think, the ideal time to ask a newer person's set of eyes on a, a policy where we are sure we're in complete compliance, let's, let's ask you. All right.
Certainly.
Awesome, thank you, Don, very much.
I feel me.
Now where the board calendar needs to be modified, remember we, we just discussed earlier that, you know, you wanna.
Put in goals for November fourth, so I, I like that idea, thank you, so, um.
After the merger, do a work.
When is our first meeting after the vote?
The ninth.
Ninth? There is a meeting, Judy brought that up, that we've scheduled for November second, which is a full board meeting, it's a Monday night before the vote, with CCSU, with Prudential Committee, and Westford, um, to present to those interested, the night, the eve of the vote, what the red study is all about, Judy and I talked about that, and that was a good date for Westford, so I sh, I just said, we have to have, by law, an informational meeting, we just, we're gonna do it the night before.
Okay.
So that's November second, Monday.
Okay, um, what time and where, or do we know that yet?
It's probably at EJ at seven PM somewhere, probably the high school, just because.
How's it at the Hays School, I'm thinking, because it's like, one place, and I'm not so positive that the Westford part of that is happening.
Might be at the high school. It's at, at EJ, it might be in Westford.
They might be doing the Westford part separately, but I'm not positive.
Yeah, they probably are, I bet they are, why would they cover the construction?
I think they may be doing it in their community, and, you know, over the next few weeks, there are informational meetings happening
Yeah.
in all three communities, and the one here, did we tell you guys that date, is the sixteenth. Is the sixteenth. Oh, no, it's not the sixteenth, that's a, that's, no, it's not very good.
Seventeenth. It's a Wednesday night.
It's a fourteenth.
Fourteenth of the Wednesday.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth is the junction, fifteenth is Westford.
So the fourteenth is the junction, fifteenth is Westford. Ours is the twentieth, right?
Twentieth, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
We are in the twentieth.
Um, it will be at the elementary school again. Right, Mark?
It was FMS.
Yep, yep.
That was posted in FMS.
Oh, is it posted as FMS?
Don't quote me.
Okay.
But I.
We have another meeting before then, so I will confirm the location and we'll make sure the location's up on our website. When we talked about it at the communication committee meeting, I think we said EES, but I think then it was gonna be whatever worked for people.
It might be, it might be, very well.
And. Okay. Um, so those meeting dates are coming up. In addition to that meeting date on November second, Mark and I are actually also hitting all three schoolhouses for meetings that are at the end of the teacher's day, at three thirty, um, at the middle school on one of the days and at four here and at the elementary school. And we'll probably, Mark will probably deliver, you know, the majority of the content that's happened at the information sessions, the public forums, and then we'll mostly just be there for whatever questions teachers have.
Certainly welcome to attend, I mean, it's just a town meeting type of.
Yeah.
Thing.
Um.
In terms of next meeting, Kim, I'd like to, um, bring the mon report in on the, on the twenty eighth, not the twelfth.
It does say founders. Does it say founders?
Which monitoring report?
And's mon report for three reasons.
So Brendan posted it.
One is Ben, from our ATN, won't be here till the twenty eighth, and I think we'd rather than capture it on film.
Yeah. Yep.
We also will have attended an Sback training session in terms of how to understand statewide assessment results. Right now, we start to interpret, um, you know, what that means. Um, and then finally, uh, we've postponed my presentation on the blueprint for learning and teaching, AKA strategic plan. I wanted to set the context. We just haven't had a chance to talk about it, I'd like to bring that back and do that next month on the twelfth, so that when we go to the ends, you're gonna, you'll have a sense of what the means are to get to closing the gap. So I'd like to.
Pushing the ends out and sticking that in for, to be adding groundwork for.
I'd like to do that. I, I think I'd like to do that, yeah.
So Saturday, twelfth and the twenty sixth?
Twenty, twenty sixth, right?
Twenty sixth.
Yeah, it's that Monday, last four meeting of the month. And our, our ATN is scheduled for that night.
And it's too much, if we have nothing else on the agenda, can, is it possible, Mark, that they could both be on the same day? Can you handle, can you envision a meeting that could include the strategic plan and the monitoring report for MS?
I can do anything, yeah.
Well, I'm just thinking to miss the opportunity to.
To have the public see that?
All of that happen.
As long as we don't put anything else, I mean, that's a good hour and a half.
I know, so maybe you and I can think about whatever else is there.
Sure, be glad to do that.
And.
And I'll have the whole leadership team here.
We will have had so many other meetings around the unification vote. I mean, there'll be a lot of other meetings happening that I'm thinking we can probably free up the agenda for everything but consent agenda and then.
Okay.
Do two hours of you.
Okay, well, like the team.
You, two hours of Mark and his team on the twenty sixth.
On the twenty sixth, not the twelfth?
Yeah.
If, if you.
Yeah, that's a good point, Kim.
Picture doing that, I, I think that setting the context two weeks ahead may lose momentum. And I think if we can invite, um, thankfully, we'll have our ATN, but with that amount of time, we might be able to get PTO's support in getting people to really come. I mean, this is one of the most important things that you're doing, that we're doing as a district, working on outcomes for kids and how we get there. And I know the conversation you shared with us even briefly about the strategic plan is really inspiring and exciting stuff. And so if we had the opportunity to have families, um, maybe be curious and join us for that, that would be awesome.
Okay. Good, good idea.
Yay. Okay. Look at that, we've got two agendas planned. Thank you, folks. And obviously, if anything should come up on the twelfth, we can always put it in the beginning of November. Um, and anything more urgent would come up more quickly, of course.
Cashel will send your online evaluation.
Should I have done it already?
Oh, my.
In that case, in order to keep us on schedule so we could have good checkmarks.
I know.
I make the motion we adjourn.
Look at that. It is eight thirty.
We are ahead of schedule, folks. And we had really rich conversations, thank you, guys.
I was psychopath.
He's second.
Yay, okay. All those in favor? No discussion. Aye, passes five zero.